Alright, good evening everyone. At this time, I call to order the regular board meeting of the Mililani Maoka Launani Valley Neighborhood Board 35, August 15th, 2023. It is 7:00 PM and I would like to ask Scouts, DSA Troop 664 to lead us in our Pledge of Allegion.
May the audience please rise for the presentation of the colors. Color Guard Attention, Color Guard Ford March. Mark Time, March. Left Wheel, March. Ready, Halt. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Scouts salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color Guard Ford, March. Mark Time, March. Left Wheel, March. Ready, Halt. Color Guard Dismissed, you may be seated.
Okay, we ask if you could please remain standing and at this moment, I'd be pleased to join this neighborhood board. Is we can do a moment of silence, please, for the community of Maui? Okay, thank you very much, you may be seated. Okay, we'll go right into meeting decorum. Again, on behalf of Chair Hazama and your Mililani Maoka and Launani Neighborhood Board, again, we welcome all of you here to this meeting, whether you're joining us in person or virtually. We just ask in terms of the meeting decorum that, you know, we want to hear your thoughts, your feedback, but to please raise your hand and be recognized by the Chair. If you're present, the Chair will call you up to the microphone. If you're joining us virtually, just again, same thing, signal that you want to speak and the Chair will recognize you and give you your time to provide your feedback. And finally, we ask that if possible, to limit as best as you can to three minutes, if possible, really with the purpose so that we can get as much input and feedback from the community. Thank you very much, Chair, back to you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I will move on to our monthly reports, the Honolulu Fire Department this evening. It is online.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me?
Evening, yeah, go ahead.
Alright, the statistics provided below represents the confirmed number of incidents in the Neighborhood Board's geographical area for the previous months. This is the month of July 2023. If you have any questions, you can email the HFD's Community Relations Office at, it's all capitals, H F D N H B at lower capital, Honolulu.gov. As far as incidents goes, for the statistics for July 2023 for fires, we had one structure fire, one cooking fire, and 36 medical related calls. Some safety tips for the month. When cooking, stay in the kitchen. When frying food and cooking over stove tops, keep a lid nearby. If a pan of food catches a fire, slide the lid over and turn off the burner. Remember the stove top and oven area not to be used for storages. Ensure working smoke alarms are installed properly. Bed shakers and strobe alarms are available for hearing and visually impaired occupants. Place your escape from fire base on your abilities. Keep your exit routes clear. Ensure windows and doors are open easily and practice your escape plan. When the alarm sounds, get outside and stay outside. Call 911, 911 from your safe meeting place using a mobile phone. If you are unable to evacuate, shelter in place, stay near a window and call 911. Exercise regularly, build strength, improve coordination and balance. Ask to talk about appropriate physical exercises. Be aware of your surroundings, including uneven surfaces. Take your time when getting out of your chair or bed. Stand and get your balance before you begin to walk. Keep walking areas, pathways and stairs well lit and clear of tripping hazards. Wear sturdy, well-fitting footwear and utilize handrails. Review your medications with your doctor and keep another list of medications, medical directives and emergency contacts posted on your refrigerator. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department this evening? Anyone? Seeing none, thank you very much, we'll move on to the Honolulu Police Department.
Alright, aloha, good evening, everybody. Corporal Munu with the District 2 Community Policing Team, filling in for Officer Inuma who's not here tonight. For some quick stats for the area, at least as far as I'm tracking the Mililani area, so far this month, there have been three burglaries, two unauthorized entry into motor vehicles or UEMVs. Couple of those were smash and grab through the window, couple of those, it appears is the vehicle owner just left the doors unlocked. And one robbery, the robbery though, it looks like it's just between Mililani High School students within the campus, nothing out there in the public or anything like that. For safety tips, I know summer's a wrap, but I know fall and Christmas break are gonna come around pretty quick, so I just got some traveling safety tips for you folks. So hopefully you can use that when the time comes around. First and foremost, obviously, make sure your home is locked and secured. I know it kind of sounds like a no-brainer, but even going to sleep at night, sometimes I double-check my doors and something is left unlocked when I thought it was locked, when I thought it was locked up. If you have a nice trusting relationship with your neighbors, work with them while you're gone because, you know, it's a great set of eyes and ears. Maybe start a group chat with them, so if they do see something suspicious, they can communicate with each other, they can notify you right away. Again, but that's only if you trust them, you don't want, you don't want, you don't want to let somebody that you don't trust as a neighbor know you're gonna be gone for a week and a half, that'd be pretty bad. It can get kind of pricey, but maybe look into Wi-Fi lighting and Ring cameras or Nest cameras, security cameras. They're great when you're traveling. You can, you know, turn on your lights at night remotely. You can always check in on your house with a live feed, see how it's looking. Of course, make sure you always stop your mail with the United States Postal Service so that it doesn't compile on your porch and you end up with the porch pirates or your mailbox starts to get full and it really looks like you're gone for an extended period of time. For people who aren't social media, I know it takes the magic away, but try not to post your vacation pics while you're on vacation. Not everyone on your friends list is gonna be, you know, your friend all the way and if they have bad intentions and it shows that you're on a cruise ship for another week and a half, your house is gonna be a sitting duck, so. If you're traveling with little ones, children, grandchildren, if they're old enough, please try and get them to remember a contact phone number in case they get lost so they can tell the trusted authority who to contact, what your hotel you're staying at, what hotel number. And we're also, in community policing, we're also doing KIIDs all the time too, so on HonoluluPD.org, if you see the public events that we are offering a KIID, please feel free to bring them along, be more than happy to get them a KIID. Hopefully you never need it, but it's good to have. And lastly, while you're out exploring, especially the amount of time I was working in Waikiki, if you are lost and you're looking at your phone for directions, please try to be cognizant of your surroundings because sometimes if there are some people who are preying on tourists, it's easy to see someone that's just engrossed in their phone and not aware of their surroundings. So try to be aware of your surroundings if you have to look at your phone for directions and that's all I have for safety tips, are there any questions?
No, thank you, any questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, do we have border water supply on, online?
Kathleen let us know that she couldn't make it for that, that meeting that's tonight.
Oh, okay.
Border Water Race.
Okay, then we'll move on to our military representative this evening.
Aloha. Okay. My name is Selena Jentkowski, Community Relations Specialist, US Army Garrison Hawaii Public Affairs Office. I am standing in for Lieutenant Colonel Dan Antolos, who's currently deployed off-island. The US Army Garrison Hawaii is holding a hiring fair on August 22nd at Kehe Lagoon Memorial Hall, address 2685 North Nimitz Highway, starting at 8:30 AM, ending at 2:00 PM. This is open to the public, so if you or anybody you know is interested in any employment opportunities with US Army Garrison, they can go there. If they are interested, please make sure to bring two references, proof of ID, social security card, resume, and an application. There are openings in business operations like golf, bowling, food service, child use services, and you can enjoy benefits such as retirement, access to our recreation facilities, discounted childcare training, commissary and exchange privileges. Come out and see what kind of opportunities are available to you. We are helping to spread the word for the Na'kua Wounded Warrior Canoe Regatta that will be taking place on Saturday, August 19th, at Fort DeRusi Beach Park, starting at 7:40 AM, ending at 4:00 PM. The Na'kua Wounded Warrior Canoe Regatta was created to assist recovering troops through the healing power of Hawaiian water, so if you can go out and support those folks, we highly recommend it. There will be teams represented by the Army, Navy, Marines, Air Force, Coast Guard and other organization. The event has since expanded to include a youth division and our Gold Star Ohana, so come out and support those folks. The US Army Garrison will also be participating in the Hawaii Career Expo that will be held at Neil Blade Steil Center Exhibition Hall on Wednesday, August 23rd, starting at 9:00, ending at 2:00. They will be conducting on-the-spot interviews and collecting resumes to fill a wide range of positions from professional and administrative vacancies to environmental engineering, contract performance, emergency services, housing administration and information technology. There will also be availability in the skilled trades such as carpentry, electrical equipment operation, HVAC, plumbing, wastewater, material handling and maintenance. Recently, the Army conducted two homeless sweeps of the Moku Lea Army Beach Park. It's, one was conducted at the end of June, the second one was earlier this month. We partnered with HPD Achieve Zero and the Department of Transportation. So we help to move the homeless and clean up the beach area. There was a lot of debris along with biohazard debris, so all of that was taken care of. Both sweeps were considered successful by all the parties participating and we realized that this is an ongoing event that we'll have to take part in. But we are committed to helping keep our areas clean. There was also recently discovered turtle nesting area in that beach, so we just kind of made sure that we were protecting and keeping that safe. Lastly, earlier today, I sent out a report on the Army and its support for the wildfires on Hawaii Island and Maui. So on August 8th, when the winds began to increase, there were reports of brush fires and the Army on PTA dispatched two brush trucks, one water tender and one command vehicle with firefighters to help complement the Hawaii County firefighters' efforts in their firefighting efforts. We helped with the La Malino or Lala Milo Farm Lots, the Kohala Coast near Spencer Beach Park and at the Monica Resort area. PTA engaged for approximately 48 hours before they were deployed back to base. They received another weather and fire update from Hawaii County Emergency Management and additional aviation assets were deployed, two Blackhawks, one Chinook from the 25th Combat Aviation Brigade. They were deployed to Bradshaw Army Airfield on Hawaii Island to help with firefighting operations. The vast majority of military support to Maui has been through the Hawaii National Guard. However, this weekend, Joint Task Force 50 was activated and this is in an effort to help provide an assist with coordinated military support. In total, there are nearly 300 Army personnel, active and guardsmen on the ground in Maui. JTF-50 is commanded by Brigadier General Steven Logan and he has a legal authority to command both National Guard forces operating under Title 32 and active duty forces operating under Title 10. In the report that I sent Chair Hazama earlier today, it has approved resources, websites that you can go to if local folks want to assist in the recovery efforts. And that is all, mahalo, any questions?
Alright, thank you. Any questions for our military representative? Thank you very much, it was a great report. Okay, so we move on to Board Business, so we have a presentation from the Aviation Brigade by Chief Hill. You can come up. Dylan, I sent you the PowerPoint slides.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have a slide deck, so we'll put it up there.
Do you know what state you're in from?
Explain it.
Okay, was it like?
As in like a couple hours ago?
Okay.
Yeah.
I might have been on my way to.
Okay. Okay.
Be positive, you shared it with me.
Sorry, I pulled everything up.
So just to introduce myself, I'm CW5 James Hill, I'm the Brigade Standardization Pilot, which is a fancy word from the Lead Aviation Trainer for the organization with regards to flight operations here on Oahu. And obviously with 25th Cab, we push out to all over, all over the Indo-Pacific region and then out to, up to Alaska, we have units. So the presentation that will come up eventually, if it doesn't, it's no big deal, just kind of shows how we fly around the island and how we are going out of our way to attempt to reduce our noise signature around the Mililani area because we know with Wheeler Army Airfield being literally on the, just north of y'all's homes, we do our best to mitigate that noise the best we can. And some of the measures that are outlined in the class literally show how we've adjusted our traffic pattern in the local flying rules to attempt to reduce that noise signature on the area. Again, those slides show it as a pictorial and we just had a change to our local flying rules that basically said, if we're outside of our traffic pattern right here at Wheeler, that we're gonna maintain 1,500-foot AGL, which is about 500-foot higher than the prescribed in the FARs for safety. But know that I've designated a lot of areas around the airfield and over the towns as avoid areas. At the end of the day, sometimes aviators have to make a decision to unfortunately fly over populated areas, not because they want to fly over populated areas, but because of the fact that sometimes you just get forced there, whether that's because of weather, whether that's because of other traffic in the area, which we don't want to run into. All those factors go into those choices that are made and I promise that most of the aviators that are flying here live here and want to reduce that nuisance because it can be, it can become a nuisance if done regularly and frequently, which unfortunately with the airfield, we do a lot of frequent operations in and out of there and that's just due to the nature of training a lot of young aviators. Right now, the Army is at a time in its genesis to where we have a lot of younger aviators in our population just due to the fact that wars in Afghanistan and Iraq have ended, so our hour levels have gone down, so that's created a situation where we're actually having to train more now than we ever have. So again, don't take it as a nuisance, but again, take it as a, we are trying to get better, to be safer for everyone. So obviously the slides are up, so I'll go to the next slide just to kind of give some context. Yeah, it's fine. I'm gonna do my best to get through this. So if you see one of these, yell at us when I say that tongue-in-cheek, right? So if you see one of the helicopters outlined right here, these are the ones that we primarily fly as Army aviators. So you've got the Blackhawk helicopters, the Apache helicopters, the Chinooks, and then our HH Medevac have the Red Cross on the front. Those are our US Army helicopters that we own and love and they fly under the local flying rules that my Garrison and I produce, or I assist with producing. I do some of the writing for it. Next slide. And we push those, that information out to our other services to include the Marines, the Coast Guard and the Navy, who also have aircraft that operate here as well. They all look like this, even though the Seahawk looks strangely like us, but they're a lighter gray. And then the Marine Osprey are obvious and then the Dolphins. All of us operate in the same limited airspace and we're all trying to really train in the same space. Coast Guard has a real-world mission, our Medevac has a real-world mission. And a lot of the operations that we're doing here are training to get better. Next slide, please. Where we train, Oahu, Hawaii and then mainly the PTA. Maui, there's just not a lot of space and it's mostly mountainous, so there's not a lot of training there. Some National Guard areas that we would potentially land at, but nothing recurring. PTA is one of our bigger training areas, that's where a lot of our shooting happens with our Apaches. So we take that off-island, go to the big island where there's a lot more room and are able to dispense ammo over there. And that's where a lot of the Army and Marines shoot their big guns to reduce the sound over here because our range is not very small on the backside of the airfield, but it does take up airspace. Next slide. Our flight training area, so I've got two blowups here. One that kind of shows the airfield, that square, and then really the area that you're concerned about is the Mililani Town area up into the mountains. Those are all designated as avoid areas now on our local flying rules. Again, avoid, not necessarily no-fly, and we're gonna attempt to avoid as best we can. An example, last night I was flying and we had five aircraft operating in the pattern and they were like, you can't transition the airspace, so we had to go south of town to get into the training area that we were trying to get into, but we looked at all the lights and went to the darkest area we could and flew over that as high as we could without going into the clouds because we were trying to avoid that, so. And you can definitely see between the two mountain ranges, there's a big set of airspace right in the middle which precludes us from doing a lot of things. Just a little history, obviously it's been here for, Wheeler Army Airfield's been here for a long time and it's one of the first places attacked in 1944, so it's got a long legacy. I absolutely love that airfield, I love being in the buildings that I work in, I love the history of it just because I'm kind of a history nerd. But to sit in a building that was there in 1944 where my office is, is very humbling and that's part of why I bring this up because it's my home, it's my airfield, it's where I work out of and I live at Schofield, so I listen and hear all the noise too when those guys fly over and gals. Next slide. So some of the mitigation that we're doing is, if you'll notice, the Wheeler Army Airfield traffic patterns, this blue line that extends out a long ways and through a lot of, quite frankly, quite a few noise complaints, we've changed that pattern to where it's the blue line with the green, where it says early crosswind departure. That's to assist with mitigating sound on that northern neighborhood that's north of where it says Waipio Acres and we're trying to make that turn a little bit earlier and get our aircraft up to altitude a little bit quicker. That pattern was designed for, to try to mitigate noise, but if you notice the red line, that depicts basically the FAA's consideration of what is safe. So we're cheating what the FAA considers safe because we're helicopters and we're actually trying to do it as best we can in the constraints that we have. So again, we're attempting to reduce the sound that's happening down here in Mililani through a concerted effort to reduce the size of our pattern. That doesn't mean that we won't occasionally fly that blue line that extends up onto the golf course and then pass, but that's typically when we have a high-density night with a lot of traffic and we're trying to avoid that as much as possible. And again, the FAA recommends a much bigger pattern, but we do our best to reduce the size of that because we're helicopters, we're trying to reduce that size, we're more maneuverable, so. Next slide. So just some noise abatement that covers us. So we establish a program and good public relations program to educate and inform the public. That's what we're here to do tonight. Our local flying rules are required by the AR, but they're self-imposed. A lot of the local flying rules are self-imposed rules to try and mitigate noise and be good stewards and be good neighbors is what it comes down to because we know we live right there. Contrary to popular belief, pilots do not intentionally fly over your houses, I promise. Our number one goal is safety, so I'm going to protect the crew that's inside the aircraft and I'm gonna do my best to not compromise the people that I'm in charge of because I'm a pilot in command and I'm in charge of the people that are in the aircraft and I'm gonna do my best to keep them safe. And then the last kind of point to this is the FARs, which is what the regulations outside of the Army regulations restricts a minimum altitude to 1,000 feet AGL over congested areas. We're going out of our way to go at 1,500-foot where we can, but for helicopters, we can actually operate as low as we need to per the FARs. But we choose not to because we know that's loud and annoying, so we do our best to, we've increased that altitude to 1,500 AGL where we can and we're gonna avoid overflight by 1,500 feet laterally is our goal. Again, that's a goal and sometimes we may have to change that and compromise that in order for safety, but trust me, it's not, it's not gonna be for very long and hopefully it's a short duration of noise. Next slide. Want you to go. For our contact information, that still good? It'll reach her, then she'll call me, she'll yell at me, I'll find out the problem and I'll find out the person that did the thing or tried to and then try to provide a response as best we can. Again, there's quite a few references that she can provide, Selena can provide, that will give it all away to try to get a call sign or get what the aircraft looks like and then I can use that to investigate the individuals because again, I'm in charge of the standardization for the organization. So if people aren't doing things to the standard, then I want to make sure that we're policing them up because that's what's most important to me is making sure they're doing the right thing. Next slide. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief, we have any questions?
I had, I had one. If I could. I do have some, I think they're, you know, TV helicopters every once in a while.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Is there, I mean, they're doing whatever they're doing because the freeway is, I'm not close to the freeway, but they're flying up and over me.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you aware of those? I mean, are you guys?
So we, there's a lot of tour helicopters that operate out of the airport and they look like news helicopters, they're smaller, much smaller than the military helicopters. They have free rein to fly right along the highway. A lot of times, our airspace, they have to be, they have to be controlled through that, so tower will give them a clearance to transition through the airspace and a lot of times they get pushed over the highway because it's an easy place to find them. So if they say, hey, I'm transitioning H1, H2, if I look at the highway, I can find them very quickly and see them. If there's only a couple places they can push, further into the mountains, which a lot of times we know that the weather develops on the mountains and then just kind of sits there, they can't go into the clouds, though their helicopters are not built or designed for that, so they stay in via far condition, so if the weather's bad, you won't see them a lot of times and that's, that's the reason why. But yeah, they fly over H1, H2 and they're not a nuisance for us, but we find them all the time. We're like, hey, where, because they're really hard to see as well when they're six miles away, so.
Hey, thank you, any other questions?
I just wanted to make sure that the slides would be forwarded so I can see them. I appreciate that the movement is less than noise. I appreciate that the, the movement is less than noise for Millilani. But my concern is that Launani Valley, which sits below Maoka, gets a lot of the offset noise because we're trying to avoid Maoka. It is what it is. I can appreciate the training is necessary. My neighbor that moved back to the mainland to DC, she used to train.
Yes.
So she would really get upset when she's off in someone's and so she understood it. So it was easier to deal with. My concern is that going forward, um, I just want to make sure that you folks are aware that we can appreciate the training. I just don't appreciate that I can see your pilot's face outside my kitchen window because that's how low they're flying over my home. Some of our neighbors, they have pets and things that windows are rattling. Those are the kinds of things I think as, and then sometimes at night they're just circling right over my house, 10, 11 o'clock at night. It's that stuff has been reported, so it's good. I just want, so to know, see you face to face. You're the guy that's gonna, you know, let them know that let's really try not to let that happen because what was told to us is Army is being very diligent. It's other, others who, it's not our side of the island. So it, it's one of those things where we share a whole umbrella with all the branches. And I literally live on the, on the flight path.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, I appreciate that you guys are going a little higher. And again, like I said, being diligent is, is when is the next training? I like to let my neighbors know if there's a next planned larger training where you folks are gonna up the air.
Yes, ma'am. So I think the next big training exercise that's going to be working out of, of Wheeler specifically, I mean, like really big training is going to be, uh, October, November timeframe. They have what's called JPMRC, which it's a large multinational, multi, um, multi-service exercise. It's going to be using heavily using Wheeler Army Airfield. Um, I'm, I'm sure prior to that happening, there's going to be a press release on like where you're going to be affected the most. I, I, you know, I can't, I can't sit here and, and say that it's going to change very much, but we're going to do our best to, to mitigate. And if, if someone's like, if, if there's an issue and, and you have a valid complaint, somebody's down that low and you can see their face.
Oh, I mean, it. You folks have been notified on things like that. So yeah, at 11 o'clock at night. Right. The morning, why is this? I get videos of helicopters flying.
Tell you at, at two in the morning, it's, it's, I don't want to say it's highly unlikely that we don't, we, but I know it like.
It can happen during training. It, I understand you got to train for all types of things, but I think at the end of the day, our area is canopied. So it's not as bright as here where it's all traffic, all streetlights. You can see it clearly. Ours kind of fumbles out into a darker.
Near, you're talking right past the, basically the, um,
Between Maoka and.
And the tech park.
Correct.
So that's where, that's where that early crosswind has, has come in handy because we were going a little bit further and basically, I don't want to say strafing the valley, but we were flying up next to it. Now with that early turn, it's, it's less, but yeah, yeah. Yeah. So that, that white line, we're, we're right at the highway. We're basically making that right. So we're not necessarily strafing the valley. But again, that, that blue line may get used if we just have a ton of traffic because ATC is gonna, gonna do its best to keep us from hitting each other. Like that's their, their biggest concern.
And the new airstrip, is it opening up anytime soon? That newer, the area that they're putting in now, the newer?
Oh, the, um, all the construction that's on the airfield. So that's not a really a, a change to the airfield. It's going to increase our ramp size and we're not going to increase the amount of aircraft. It's the same amount of aircraft. They're just moving to newer facilities. So it's not a matter of, we have a lot of historic buildings, um, that will, will never be torn down. They're going to remedy a lot of those, but those got moved to, they're going to get moved to newer facilities.
And your reason why I asked is because the garden that's right there, right across, I have some neighbors that they garden there. They had to, you know, change the scope of that. And a lot of them were frustrated because it, does it mean that they're going to fly straight over us now? And the line is going to change. That's why I asked that.
No, I don't think the line will change very much because that's going to be a ramp. There's going to be one pad that's close, um, to there, um, but, but they'll probably head out and go opposite direction. Yeah.
Okay, Stanton. Um, I was on the Zoom call listening in before I got here and I just wanted to thank you for the outreach. Um, it really means a lot that you guys are, and understanding all the things that you guys are considering and all the things that you guys are, are doing to, for mitigation. So thank you for, for
Yeah, no worries.
Your service and thank you for coming out and, and, um, talking to us tonight.
Oh, yeah, no worries, Stan. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Chief, I have a question. I understand in order to maintain readiness, flight hours in terms of night training is, is key and it's important, but is there a time limit where, you know, whether it's an SOP locally or the commanding general says you will not fly past this time?
So for our airfield, we, we stop traffic pattern operations at 2300. So at 2300, we're not supposed to have aircraft that are doing consistent traffic patterns, which means basically circles over and over and over again. At 2300, um, that's supposed to be arrivals and departures only. So they'll, they might land, but they're either coming down, uh, for the night or going out and they can't do, uh, continuous traffic patterns after 2300 at Wheeler for our, for our SOP and regulations. Now, if they go off the reservation and go into the TFTA, which is our, our training area and they're doing patterns over there, they're authorized to do that, which could affect, depending on the, the, where you are in the valley. There's a couple of LZs that are really close up there. Um, and that's for our Medevac training that's happening. A lot of our Medevac training happens super close. And the reason that they do it close is because a lot of times they're doing, uh, what's called live voice. So they have, we're doing live training with our medics and in order to mitigate, um, the chance of let's say something happened to that person. Let's say they fell, that gets them the most rapid response. Um, if we had to transport them as a patient now because of something happening that's outside of our control. So our Medevac may sneak up into there a lot of times, but they'll typically go to the TFTA, uh, which is our training area or alert area on a map, which is about 10 miles to the north along the, uh, uh, Colos. So is where primarily a lot of our low level training happens. So 2300 though is to, to answer your question. So, uh, for arrivals and departures, uh, to Wheeler.
Okay. And, uh, understand that chief. So in terms of then training time that affects the community or the residents, is there a time, um, limit or?
So normally let's say, uh, a crew gets gas at 2345. Let's say they get refueled. That's when our fuel closes down. Most of our aircraft can fly for another two hours. So that you'd probably see arrivals as late as one o'clock. That's because a lot of our other, um, support systems shut down after 2245. Or when I say support, it's like fuel and things like that, things that we need for the helicopters to run. And when those shut down, that limits the backside training. So a lot of times you won't see Army crews out past probably one at the latest, just because of, uh, fuel constraints. Uh, and then that should be an arrival or departure only. If they're doing patterns after 23, let me know and I can, I can remedy that. So, and a traffic pattern is taken off, circle, come back in and then doing it multiple times. So.
Okay. So really one o'clock is a basic reasonable time.
Fairly, fairly good pant, planning factor that, that we're not going to be flying later than that. And then a lot of times we don't do a lot of morning training. Um, there are occasional flights in the morning, but for the most part, our morning training is, is fairly limited, um, because we, we tend to do afternoon and the evening time. Because it gets, um, a few different things for our pilots. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Chair, we do have Mike Donnelly online.
Okay. Um, like you have something?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Appreciate it. Just, uh, two, two or three things. First, uh, I want to thank, uh, Chief Hill for briefing, um, good explanation. Try to decipher some of the acronyms in the chat. And the timeframe. So 2300 is 11 PM and, uh, uh, the other thing I wanted, the second point is just, uh, to board member, it was, um, point Teresa that, what we've been doing recently is pre notifications. So particularly with JPMRC joint, Joint Pacific Multinational Readiness Exercise coming up in October, November. We will send out, uh, a pre notification to all, uh, the neighborhood boards, elected officials and other stakeholders to give, you know, keep everybody informed. So nobody's taken by surprise. That, that seems to really help folks. So when they see the aircraft, uh, taking off that they're not surprised, particularly if you've noticed, we have been sending out pre notifications about C-17s landing at, uh, Wheeler Army Airfield. And that's going to continue. Uh, that capability is something that the commanding general wants to exercise continually based on, um, what we're doing here in the, in the theater. And, you know, and the other thing is I would just ask Chief, if, if you could just talk through, um, everybody understands what drones are, but we, we call them UAVs or UASs, um, and any comments about where the UAS, the, the shadow flies? And if possible, I, I know I asked you this question before, but, um, is it the newer model? Any, any timeframe when, uh, the cab might get that new model that's a lot quieter over?
So for fielding of UAS, I, I couldn't give you a, a educated guess tonight with regards to the, the quieter, um, mode of the UAS. What I can tell you about the UAS is it, it does take off, uh, the, the ones that we have stationed here, uh, take off on a launcher. So it's not like they're rolling down the runway. They take off on a launcher and make a, they come up to altitude, make a right turn and go over to the restricted area, which is, uh, on the, um, on the far side of the White Island mountain range. And they're pretty much working in that area, um, for, and they're working at upper altitude. So between 4,000 and 10,000 feet, when they do come in to land, um, they, I don't want to say crash land. They, they land on, uh, off the runway on the, on the side, uh, with a net just in case they, but there, it's all autonomous. With a, with a controller inside the, in the box to wave off if the weather's bad or something. And then they'll launch back out. You'll hear them buzz up and then meh, and then they will make that right turn into back into it and do, try to do it again, um, to get the aircraft down safely. But, but they're mostly operating to the, to the west side, uh, up and above, um, very limited over on, on this side of the, um, highway except for takeoffs and, uh, aborted landings is what I would call it for, uh, at lower altitudes where they're the most, uh, loud. So.
Yeah, Stephen Melendez here. I have a question. What is the model and type of the drones you're flying?
Uh, they're RQ7s, uh, which is a, um, uh, oh gosh, I just had their acronym in my head. So it's a RQ7, um, tanks on the line. He'll probably be able to help me out. Um, I cannot remember the obit letter off the top of my head. It's been a long day. So I apologize.
A common name is the shadow, right, Chief?
Say again.
The common name is the shadow.
Yes, the shadow, RQ7 shadow. And then we will have during JPMRC, we'll have, um, the Gray Eagle here, which is a larger, uh, aircraft and it takes off and lands from the runway, um, just a little bit bigger wingspan. Um, and it'll be operating kind of similarly to the, the shadows.
Uh, last question. What is the approximate size?
Of the, of the shadows?
Your drone.
Oh, um, uh, probably 25 feet wingspan. So, uh, not very big. I mean, bigger than most, but not a quadcopter. I'll put it that way. So it's slightly bigger than that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? I just got a couple, Chief.
Okay.
And great that you guys have these rules and you're trying to enforce it. Um, but there are going to be exceptions, right? I mean, like real active medevac, you guys are going to just fly straight to no matter what.
Yeah.
I would imagine. And you have emergency situations and such. So.
Absolutely.
Just let the public know. I mean, you know, some of these, some of these things where they have to fly are actual real emergencies and they, they augment the civilian medevac, um, things too. So they're not only military lifts, they're also civilian lifts as well. So.
Right.
Um, if they gotta go, they're gonna go, um, straight, you know, shortest distance is a straight line and they're, they gotta expedite and they're gonna go. So.
And mine's a great example. Last night I, I flew contrary to the way I wanted to fly to mitigate noise just due to the fact that I was precluded due to traffic and other things that, that stopped me from doing that. So, um, I, I do not want to fly near town or in the, over anybody's house. I try to avoid that. I flew in Germany for, for a year and some change and the rules over there are, uh, are substantial and you would fly a corridor or a line or you were getting, and they had quiet hours from midnight until, or in zero one in the summertime. So their quiet hours were after one o'clock. Those were their quiet hours in, in Germany as well, but we were hosts or we were guests in their country. So they made the rules. So.
So my last question is, um, you showed us a list of vehicles that are at part of the cab. But if there are aircraft types that are, come into your space or, or land at Wheeler, you know, like the air tankers that, that flew on Maui and stuff, who has jurisdiction or command over those vehicles?
Uh, for which ones again? Say that one more time.
Well, you know, like vehicles like, well, the C-17s for example, are not, are not technically cab.
Right.
But I know you have the air tankers that flew in for, you know, Maui and stuff. So if they actually landed Wheeler, who has jurisdiction command over those vehicles?
Uh, the commanders of those aircraft have the jurisdiction. If they were, if they're an AMR and they were requested to come to Wheeler, uh, for whatever reason, the pilot in command has jurisdiction over that aircraft. And once it's on the ground, um, it'll, it'll move in an orderly fashion to a place that it's parked. And then when it goes back to fly the, the pilot in command for that, that service is the, is the authority for that aircraft. Just like when I sit in a Blackhawk, during the time that I'm flying the aircraft, I'm the pilot in command. I'm in charge of that aircraft and what it does, um, when it lands and it's sitting on the ramp, it's owned by a commander at that point. So they own that, that, that aircraft that's sitting on the, on the ramp and, and I get to borrow it and go and do training with it. And that's the reality of it. So.
Seeing there, any questions online? Any further questions online? All right. Seeing none. Thank you very much, Chief. We really appreciate it.
No worries.
Yep. Okay. Moving on to residents and community concerns. Are there any this evening that are not on the agenda? Anyone online? Okay. Seeing none. We'll move on to our elected officials report. Office of Governor Green, um, Melanie, are you online? Evening, Mel.
Hi. Good evening. I don't really have much to report this evening, other than Governor Green is very busy on Maui with fires. And so we, we don't really have much to report this evening. Just our hearts and prayers go out to residents of Maui and Lahaina, especially Lahaina. And I believe there is a fundraising event at Millilani High School this Saturday. Several of our community leaders are hosting or sponsoring an event. And it's at Millilani High School from 10 to three. So I just wanted to put that out there. Probably Senator Delacruz's office will have more to report on that. But other than that, I really don't have anything to report. Dean Hazama, I mean, Chair Hazama.
That's okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mel. Any questions for the governor's office this evening? And yeah, we, we are, are very busy with the Maui situation. Thanks, Mel. Uh, moving on, do we have anybody from Congressman at Case's office on this evening? Nope. Seeing none. Um, move on. So the, um, our mayor's rep, uh, Carrie Castle was unable to make it tonight. Um, but she did, we did upload the report on our, on the board's Google Drive. So if you want to look at it, it's already there. Moving on to console district six, console member Okimoto. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. Um, just, uh, district eight, just, just so we don't, I think six is it? Is that council member wire? What is Matt's district? Maybe not. Okay. Just to make sure that I'm getting it, the information correctly. Well, thank you. Good evening. Um, you have your, my written report in front of you. And so the, the majority of the, the news that if you turn to the inside has been the, the focus, which is probably covering our state right now. Information on how we can help with the Maui disaster relief. So in, on the, I want to say on the, it's the middle page, page five. We have, um, six different reliable or legitimate, uh, resources that you can, if you choose to donate. And there, I think at this point they're asking mostly for financial donations. My team and I were able to help. I had a team go down from my office. They were asking for assistance at the Capitol because they had such a surplus of, um, support and, and a turnout. So they ended up asking for help manpower. So on, I think on Friday and then even thereafter, we were helping at the, at the Holly and the Capitol. And my team and I were able to also contribute some, um, of the necessary needs. Uh, the materials, products that were being asked for. And so that was a good. Uh, the materials, products that were being asked for. And so that was a good opportunity for us. Um, on the inside, you can see there are just some updates from things in the community. As a public safety chair, I've been really trying to focus on getting to meet with the department heads. So I was, I've been meeting with the fire department, the police department. I've met with, and you'll hear more about this in the future, met with Jim Ireland, Director of EMS. And yeah, I think some of the community outreach is in there. So you can kind of see where, um, I think Kipapas schools aren't in our district, but on the legislative side. Oh, I'm sorry. I just went to review. There was a rental and utility relief program that it wasn't in the district. It was actually in the Pearl City part of District Eight, but we had people from Millilani also attend. I, I met some of the constituents and there were people from outside of the district as well. So that was a an event that we worked with the Office of Economic Revitalization, OER, from the mayor's office. And so that was last month as well. And you have my, the part of the legislative review. So um, as many of you know, we, we don't have just a session of January through May. We actually have continued work every month. So we just finished. We just finished with our full council last week, I believe. And we're going to go back into committee hearings, but you can kind of see some of the bills. Much of them are based around the real property tax assessments and how we're trying to offer relief. So bills 34, 39, and 42 are increasing the exemption amounts, but also 42 had a, it seeks to introduce an 80% assessment tack, a cap on the properties so that we can offer relief, especially for the kupuna who are on fixed income. Bill six is talking about the self-certification in order to help address the issue of delayed permitting processes. And bill 46 is addressing the flavored vaping products. So that's just on the legislative side. We did have some measures that were introduced for the parking zones, restricted property, restricted parking zones. That's something that's not really directed towards our district, but neighboring and neighboring parts of the island, but just something that we can be aware of because that does come at a much of it will be subsidized. And so I, I did have questions about how that will impact the tax period when we have to subsidize these, these programs or other parts of the island. But other than that, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer it at this time.
Hey, any questions for representative? Yeah, go ahead. Council member, I'm sorry.
Hi, um, Bill 46.
Yes.
I know it's kind of been tracking it, um, including with council member wires office. We've been kind of watching over that. How? I'm trying to gauge and you know what it is? It really frustrates me to see every day that I go after dropping off kids or what have you, I just see so many kids with vaping devices everywhere. Everywhere you go, it doesn't matter if it's in a mall anywhere and they are children because I have addressed a few of them in the mornings. They're, they're getting it. And it's no different than the underage getting, you know, um, alcohol or what have you. But it just seems like there's so many pop-up shops everywhere. Waialua, you drive into Waialua, it's right there. Hi, welcome to Waialua. I'm a vape shop right here. Next one is right there. We're within a military servicing area. So there are a lot of things that are in that area that are young service members are entertained by or what have you, as well as our community. We like the coffee shops and what have you. But I feel like the marketing of this, I mean, there's got to be more than just you folks, obviously. And so I'm, I'm putting this out for whatever representatives and senators are online too, is we have to be more robust in what we're doing. I mean, the fact that you go in there, it looks like it's Christmas with all their lights and flashy pictures and hey, come inside, come inside. That's, we, we gotta be done with that. It's no different when Love's Bakery was in business and they started selling tobacco right next to the register. And I, why are we having this right next to my donuts? But it's a way to make money. It's a moneymaker. So maybe we need to find some options to tax a little harder or make, make some kind of, I don't want to say punishment, but hey, if you get caught selling to underage, you know, we gotta start going back in and doing that in the vape shops or wherever it is, because to see so many high schoolers. I've even seen middle schoolers.
True.
And they're pretty. They're cool. They're cute. And people do it in the malls. They do it in a store. They do it anywhere they want because they don't think it's a cigarette. It's not, we're not smoking. And yet my kids will cover their faces anytime someone takes an inhale and they'll turn away. Because they don't want to inhale that, right? And I have nothing against anybody who smokes because my parents, my grandparents and everyone else, they smoked their whole lives. But to see Kaki so simply walking around with this pretty pink one or this bedazzled one, that irritates me. And I think it's, it's nice that we're getting it. And I've been watching some of the different bills even from last session. But I just feel like what we've been doing in the schools with, you know, uh, Students Against Drunk Driving, things of that nature. Maybe we need to start looking at our schools as an area to get the kids back involved. I remember we used to hold signs in middle school and high school against certain things such as this tobacco coalition, same thing. They've been doing it. I think we gotta step back into the school realms, but um, yeah, thank you guys for doing this.
Thank you. And you're right. This is something that's been going on for a while. I think I started paying more attention to it when I was in the state house because I had a daughter at the middle school and I would ask her, I'm like, hey, can you tell me what you see? And I mean, she lives a pretty sheltered life and she would talk about, and when I would pick her up, I'd see the kids. I completely understand. And I know that the balance is the, to find the balance of how can we respect businesses who want to sell this product to adults, but also make sure that we're not marketing the Kaki because that's where the issues are. I think it's going to come down to education again. Uh, you know, we, we have the bills, the state has, I think the legislature passed something this year finally. But we are going to have to work with the police department and they're understaffed. So enforcement is another issue. I've always been one where I advocate for, I mean, I, I understand that everybody's situation is, is different, but going back to the homes, what can we do in the homes to make sure that we're talking to our Kaki? Because it's hard to expect us to teach our kids when, when we're not doing it ourselves. So.
They look like AirPods.
Yes, and definitely. And, and they're very discreet and I'm, and you can carry it around.
Still 21, correct? For vapes?
I believe because that's what smoking is. Yeah, for tobacco.
And so, but I, I know that my neighbors, some of which are young soldiers, they're vaping. Is vaping allowed under 21 on base? Or tobacco, tobacco purchases on base? Okay. I was just curious because sometimes there's different things on base than off base. But if I have a 19-year-old just enlisted, moved to Hawaii, first time away from mom and dad, and they're clearly vaping.
But maybe what we can do, um, again, I go back to education. I think that's a, a strong thing. So I mean, we work with the community law enforcement and I know that in the elementary schools, they still do dare. Maybe that's, that has to be brought up or we need to include that into the, the program because that maybe wasn't a part of it. Yeah, put it into, because the earlier you can educate the children. Um, and again, just get the support of the homes. We gotta be able to, to have the families really be the, the foundation so that when they're exposed to it, they have at least some kind of foundation to, to turn away from it. But thank you. Your, your, your concerns are very valid and I feel you. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for council member this evening?
Thank you.
Didn't county suspend their short-term rental ordinance? To free up housing units?
I'd have to check. Is this based on the governor did, or is this based on? I have to double check on that.
Yeah. Well, short-term ordinance is county, but.
Short-term.
Thought the mayor did that to free up some housing units for possible people that wanted to relocate from Maui or something.
From Maui?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me check on that. I.
But it's, it's a Oahu County thing, so.
So we're, you're asking if they suspended?
Yeah, I thought I saw something about that.
Okay. But this is after the Maui disaster?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And then Bill 46 is continuing upon the legislature.
Yeah.
Modifying Act Two, right?
Everything is gonna, yeah.
So without, without that changed, then Bill 46 dies, right? Pretty much.
That's, and that's the reality of whatever we introduce that we're the, the state legislature will oversee whatever we do. But I think, I, it was just, I think this is council member wires initiative. I think his intent was many times the council wants to just kind of be, um, to show that they're trying to take action, knowing that we, we are, you know, contingent on what the state decides to do. So yeah. Thank you, Chair, for, for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. District two, council member wire. Kelly.
Chair and members of the board, um, Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wire's office. So from last month, I think I emailed, um, Chair and Dylan and Teresa about the Rukau Street. So, um, yeah, DTS is working on this, the Chevron signs. There is a work order. Um, I did follow up on your additional question, but DTS needs to get back to me regarding the, um, speed limits. So as soon as I hear back from them, I will let you guys know. Thank you to Councilmember Okimono for talking about Councilmember Wire's Bill 46. Um, yeah, it did, um, pass first reading. So he's definitely excited about that. And it is a, um, a proposed agenda item. It hasn't been agendized yet. So please, uh, come out and support our opposition. Also, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if she mentioned Bill 47, the collection of manufactured compostable materials as well. Um, that's up for public hearing. Um, hopefully it's a proposed agenda item as well. Um, and then, uh, oh, and then, uh, Bill 34, council members, uh, real property tax bill regarding the homeowner exemption that has passed second reading as well. So thank you to everybody who came out in support. And then, um, yeah, I think that's it. And I did hear your concerns that you expressed to Councilmember Okimono. So I will let Councilmember Wire know as well. No problem. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Wire's, um, office this evening? Anyone online? Okay. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you for having me.
Okay. Moving on to, um, Senator Dela Cruz's office. David, are you on? Or Senator Dela Cruz? Oh, Malcolm. Okay. You're muted. Hold on.
Hi, Malcolm. Um, so you're not muted, but we have no audio coming from you. So if you want to check your settings. Nothing yet. Yeah. If you can go to audio settings. I'm a host. I might have more capabilities, but, um, you have a headset that you could use. Perfect. There we go. Perfect.
All right. Sorry about that. Uh, again, my name is Malcolm. I work with David, um, in Senator Dela Cruz's district office. I did hear someone mention there being a donation drive this Saturday at Millilani High School from 10 to three. Um, I just wanted to remind everybody to stay tuned because details are being worked out still. Um, there may be some adjustments as far as our requests for donations. So, um, there may be revisions to that flyer that went out on social media. Um, so please look out for that. I just have three things for you this month. Regarding the CIP funds released by the administration, um, $2 million has been released to finance, uh, the design and construction of girls athletic facilities at Millilani High School. And this is for phase three. Um, and the other two items, Millilani Middle School Parking Access for Park Users is still being finalized. Um, we will have, our office will have more details to report, uh, to you on next board meeting. And lastly, our office has been working very hard to improve our monthly e-newsletter. Uh, so if you'd like to receive those, um, please email delacruz2@capital.hawaii.gov. Again, that's delacruz2@hawaii, at capital.hawaii.gov. That is it. Available for any questions.
Hey, thank you. Any questions for Senator Dela Cruz's office? Go ahead.
Can you just repeat? Was it, the $2 million was released for the girls lock?
To finance the design and construction of the girls athletic facilities at Millilani High. And these are for the phase three improvements. To comply with Title IX gender equity requirements.
Okay. Any questions? Any other question?
And actually, so sorry to interrupt. Regarding the, uh, bill that, the legislation that was passed this past session regarding vaping, uh, that would be SB 975, if anyone wants to look up those details.
Did that bill pass?
Yes.
So what?
SB 975. And it establishes the offense of unlawful shipment of tobacco products. This includes electronic smoking devices and e-liquids under the definition of tobacco products for purposes of the cigarette tax and tobacco tax law. If you, um, would like to know more details, they're in the bill.
Okay. So is that Act Two?
Um, let's see.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Act 62.
That what?
62.
Oh, Act 62. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Malcolm.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to, uh, District 38, Representative Matsumoto.
Good evening, Chair. Members of, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Perfect. Okay. So I sent my newsletter, um, to Dylan. So hopefully you have the digital copy of that. I apologize. I'm not there with you today. My husband is at the fire station. Um, so here with my kids, but wanted to go over the things that are in my newsletter. Like the governor, a lot of focus this week on Maui and what we can do there. There's just been an outpouring of support from the entire community, um, from the entire state. And so just wanted to thank everybody who was doing their drives. Um, the reports that we are getting back, like was mentioned, they really are looking for that monetary donation now because they're trying to do more targeted care for the families there. Um, and so I also put a few links, um, to some reputable organizations. The other thing I wanted to highlight is there's a free program with the Hawaii State Public Library System called the Hawaii Digital Navigators. So helping with technology questions. And that phone number is 808-320-5141. So a great program through the Hawaii Public Library System, and that is also on the flyer. So it's free assistance with technology and internet and learning how to use the North Star Digital Literacy Training Program. So a great opportunity there. Um, the next thing I wanted to highlight is the Hawaii Republican Caucus is doing a listening tour. And so this is like a, it's like turning a town hall on its head. So instead of just the audience asking questions and the answering, it's, the concept is really trying to come and listen across the island of Oahu. And we're looking to go to the neighbor islands, depending on how things go. And so the first one is in Wynward, Oahu on August 31st at 6:00 PM at Castle. But I wanted to highlight this because we are also coming to Central Oahu. So it will be at Millilani High School on Thursday, September 14th at 6:00 PM. Doors open at 5:30. There are food trucks and entertainment trying to support small business. Um, and then we also are asking people to bring a can for Hawaii Food Bank. Um, or donations for Hawaii Food Bank. So that is also on the flyer. But we'll be doing that listening tour again, Millilani, September 14th, 6:00 PM at the Millilani High School Cafeteria. Um, and last in my report is every year I do a Capitol Talk-In Tour. And we plan this where we do a tour of the Capitol. Everybody can come. We do it during fall break so that everybody who would like to bring their children can bring their children as well when they are on break. So that is going to be Wednesday, October 11th from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon. And so just wanted to get everybody to put it on their calendar now. I'll let you remind again in September, but would love to have you all come to the Capitol tour. We'll go over the legislative process and how you can get involved and have your voice heard. So that is my report for today. If there are any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Representative Matsumoto's office this evening? Nope. Seeing none. Thank you, Lauren. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to District 46, Representative Perusso. Anybody on?
Our chair and board members. Can you folks hear me?
Uh, okay. Hold on. Yep. Go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Um, Aloha, this is Yvonne from Rep Perusso's office. Um, Rep Perusso wishes she could be here tonight. However, she is away attending the National Conference of State Legislators Working on Disaster Preparedness. Rep. Perusso wishes she could be here tonight. However, she is away attending the National Conference of State Legislators Working on Disaster Preparedness Policy with federal partners and working on getting more REPI funds. REPI standing for readiness and environmental protection integration. Funds for our district because we are so impacted by the military. Our office is also wanting to share that the most important step in improving community preparedness, or disaster preparedness and resilience is to strengthen local community capacity in this regard. And I wanted to highlight that Mililani is fortunate that it already has a group of committed leaders, including Brayden Sakai, the founder of Mililani Disaster Preparedness, Marilyn Lee and others who have gone through the Hawaii Hazards Awareness and Resilience Program Training and Certification Process. Our office will also be looking to bring our military and ADC neighbors into this conversation and supporting the Waialua and Mokuleia communities to engage in the training process. And that is it for today. So mahalo for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Representative Perusso this evening? Thank you. Okay, moving on to District 37, Representative Lachica.
Aloha. Yeah, good evening, Chair. Vice Chair, Members of the Board. I'm Erin Conway, Representative Lachica's Office Manager. She sends her apologies for not being able to make tonight's meeting. She's also an Indiana at the National Conference of State Leaders. We do have a few updates. We have been involved at the Capitol Donation Drive. I was there helping collect donations as well as process the sorting of it. It was great to see the outpouring of support from the whole community. We had a bunch of people just walk up to us on the street on asking what we were doing and how they could help. We had people try to come give us cash too, and we told them where to donate money to. That would be the best effort right now. Representative Lachica has been helping some essential healthcare workers and a medical mobile van, healthy mothers, healthy babies, get access to Lahaina to provide care to mothers in that area. A couple other updates, our office has hosted two community events recently. We hosted a talk story on July 25th where more than 100 people attended, including the mayor and managing director. Thank you to Chair Hazama and Member Teresa Quevu for attending in person. A highlight of this event was that attendees were given an opportunity to engage in breakout discussions with their neighbors to basically come up with ideas to make their neighborhood feel safer. And we passed out evaluation forms and we got back pretty positive responses. And people said that they were interested in more events like this, so we plan to have more in the future. The next issue that has been pressing, but also we're kind of putting it on hold due to everything going on in Maui, which is of course the biggest issue of our concern right now. But the bus issue in Central Oahu mainly. So 150 students in Koah Ridge and YPO Gentry don't have school bus service. So Representative Lachica took the commute to document why the cancellation was a big deal. You may have seen this on Instagram or the Star Advertiser if you were wondering why that was happening. So with the transition to the city bus, the access and wait times have been difficult because the bus stops are located further away. From Koah Ridge, it's up to a mile away and a half mile away from Pearl City High School. So the commute takes about an hour and a half to two hours. We just had a Zoom meeting last week where we had over 50 members of the community who attended online. And they got to hear directly from Assistant Superintendent Randall Tanaka from the Office of Facilities and Operations with the Student Transportation Services Branch. The parents were able to ask questions and kind of give their solutions. We're still working to restore the bus routes and also advocating that the city considers adjusting their bus stops to decrease wait times for the city bus commute since the wait time I mentioned was up to an hour. We do plan to coordinate with Councilmember Okimono's office to work together to find a solution that gets all keiki to school safely and on time. The focus right now, as I mentioned, is of course responding to Maui's recovery efforts. We plan to follow up in a month and hopefully we'll have an update. The recordings for both of our recent meetings will be posted on representativetereslachica.com as soon as we get them. And then if there are any questions, please let me know.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Representative Lachica's office? Go ahead, Teresa.
I just had a quick comment. One of my children catches school bus from Mililani Maoka to Kamehameha Schools. Obviously, it's privately owned, but they too have been struggling with lack of bus drivers. And so they've had to change routes and work their way where Milani, Milani High Schoolers for that school get picked up at 5:30 in the morning so that bus driver can take another route right after dropping them off onto campus. I'm just curious that is there a way that maybe we could work with the city bus? Where there could even just be allotted buses specifically for transportation for students within communities? Kind of like the little express buses that go through in the different areas that are smaller, like Launani Valley has an express bus that goes up to Maoka. And within Mililani, I'm wondering if there's a way to, you know, think outside the box. Because students are already on the bus and, you know, they're getting monies to pay for their bus transportation anyways. I'm wondering if maybe the conversation can start with the city to see, can we get designated, one little designated bus that students know it's going to pick up at this time and it'll take you along that route? I just wanted to put that out there since we're having that conversation.
No, thank you. I took note of that. I really appreciate, honestly, all suggestions are really helpful at this time. We're trying to look at it from what can we do the fastest, but also the best solution? So I will definitely take note of that and bring that up with the representative.
Yeah, because I noticed also Mililani, because Milani High School, I believe, also lost any transportation that way. There's been a lot of traffic coming down from Maoka. I mean, I have never seen traffic at a standstill at 7:20, 7:40 in the morning like I have in this last two weeks when it's school time. And a lot of the traffic usually goes on the freeway, but everything has just been going down to the high school area or town center. And, you know, I'm lucky I don't have to go that direction. But it's just seeing, I could imagine other towns, other places where, you know, our kids are lucky because parents are on their way to work. They can drop them off somewhere. Whereas you have rural areas that may have lost transportation. So I think that conversation, yeah, it, you know, and I like to say this generation is very spoiled. They get dropped off at everything. I remember when we walked everywhere. And, but knowing that we're in a different time and age, I think that having that conversation is very important at the legislative level going forward, that it's not a safe place out there now to have droves of kids walking along, you know, unfinished sidewalks in some areas, you know, that they're along a highway. So.
Yeah, and yeah, safety is definitely our top concern as well, especially with, you know, the crosswalk situation as well as walking on the side of the road near cars that a lot of speeding occurs in. We get reports of speeding to our office on a weekly basis. So this is a pressing issue and we will hopefully have an update next month on this.
Okay. Yeah, so for Milani and Milani Maoka, we, we have the bus circulator routes. So the kids can get on that route because the drop-off stations for both routes intersect at the Transit Center, which is right across the high school. Right. But for the YPO, yeah, for the YPO kids and the, the other, the Gentry, YPO Gentry kids, they don't have a circulator bus. So they've got to take the long distance bus to Pearl City, which is a problem for them. And that's where the, that's where the issue is, I think, for them is it just takes too long. Yeah, because they've got to wait for the long run buses, which is not going to work out for them. Yeah, so, yeah, so keep up, keep up the good work. And if we can do anything to help you, let us know.
Thank you.
We're in our district, but we don't care. I mean, that's okay.
Thank you. We will have an update next month.
Okay. Moving on to approval of board minutes for July 18th, regular board meeting. Any comments or corrections regarding the board minute? Hearing none, any objections to adopting the minutes? Hearing no objections, any abstentions? Hearing none, the minutes have been adopted by unanimous consent. Moving on to board reports, Central Oahu Regional Park.
Thank you, Chair. What we speak to the dog park and the areas that had been, I guess the grass had died because someone was spraying vinegar solution. They tried to reseed and sod and everything. They, they tried their best, they said, and they just can't seem to get it to grow at this time. But they did reopen the dog park as of July 31st.
Thank you. Moving on to community reports, education. Stephen?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be sharing the education committee report for Milani Middle School. Dylan, if you'd be so kind to share. First of all, I wanted to say that the top of our, the very top is the administration for Milani Middle School. And then the paragraph just underneath that is that, dear friends, our heart go out to all of our educational Hana, friends and families on Maui. We pray for comfort and offer our heartfelt condolences to all. We are with you all to be Maui strong. And there's been quite a bit of prayer and supplication and assistance going to Maui. I spent 10 years in Maui, building businesses and working with nonprofits and churches, and it's a great, great community. And we're with you, doing all we can from here. Also, there we have the Blazer Calendar. Want to make note on 8/21 to 8/25 are open houses. Great time to come and parents to go and meet the educators there. The very bottom of the newsletter is a portion concerning the buses. I had a, as a commissioner, I talked to Mr. Morton's office when they made the announcement about the, using the county buses for the schools. And there's two ways that they're doing it, one of which for Milani High is that their student ID, if they want to have a, they can identify to the school that they want to take the, the yellow bus. And the whole chip will be embedded actually into the student ID. And then they actually have free bus. They don't have to pay for it for the school year. And then other, up on the DOE website and the DTS, with the county DTS website, those, the other schools noted there have an item called an Express Pass. The Express Pass will provide it free for the 2022, 23 school year to help mitigate the impacts, the ongoing bus driver shortage. So we're really fortunate that they're able to, I was very proud and complimented Mr. Morton on his move to help supplement and help the students in their, in the bus transportation. The last item that I have is I wanted to comment back to Ed Case's office. I did speak with Nestor Garcia this morning. And considering, concerning continued support to Maui. And I'm part of a group called Score, poscore.org. We are mentors, about 30,000 of us nationally, where we help people build successful businesses. And Nestor Garcia is going to forward to me, there is, and we work closely with SBA, with Director Spain down at Waterfront Row. And Nestor's going to forward to me grants. There aren't federal grants out there for businesses to help them rebuild. And you just need to just write the grant. So I'm going to receive that from Mr. Garcia. Dylan, if you'd be so kind, I'll forward it to you. You can post it up on our website. And I'll forward it also to other nonprofits and other organizations. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to Military Civil Defense. Thank you. Parks and Recreation. Planning, permitting and zoning. Transportation, I have none. Alice, you have anything? Recognition?
I, Mr. Chair, I was going to ask, we are supposed to have another member, Brandon, I can't remember his name. May I ask what is going on there?
Okay, so I found out, I guess. Today, he is, his intention is he submitted his resignation to the Neighborhood Commission Office. Submitted his resignation. So we will have, next month, we will have a vacant board seat. Did not make it in time, obviously, to put on agenda.
So we're going to find, so we're going to find some other victim, right?
To go along with us eight victims? Yes, I guess so. Okay. I got it. Okay, any other questions, Alice? Nope.
I'm sorry, what?
You're good. Any, you're good. Any other questions? Nope. All right, any other announcements this evening?
Chair.
Go ahead.
I did just want to note, so all the reports that we receive, the presentation, that'll all be on the board's Google Drive. And so if we haven't seen it, I can pull it up another time. Anyway, at the top of the agenda, right under the meeting link, there's meeting materials. That's the link that'll take you to the folder. You can check out all the months in the previous year. It's a great resource. Review it before every meeting and then all reports, if you can send to me ahead of the meeting, then I can drop it in there for the public and the board. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Dylan. Okay, there are no other further announcements this evening. Our next board meeting will be held here and via hybrid Tuesday, September 19th, 7:00 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.